Hard for items listed on tonight's agenda from Michael Turnipseed. This is regarding items 3A and 3B.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, Madam Mayor. I'm a Madam Mayor, staff, City Council. My name is Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I opened your website to read the packet so I can be prepared to comment at this meeting. And I go, this item is brought forward first time, 3A. This item was brought forward by Councilmember Arias, blah, 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 blah. The city attorney will provide a PowerPoint presentation for council discussion and direction. How am I supposed to comment on that at this early in the meeting without seeing the presentation? Item B is basically the same thing. Staff's going to make another presentation and give you an update on the charter situation. How can anyone comment with these kinds of? It's wasted the paper you put it on. It's not even close to beating Brown Act requirements of giving an informed presentation of what the council is going to be talking about today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Mayor, go. That was our only speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports, item 3A, Discussion of Council Policy for Conducting City Council Meetings, Resolution Number 206-2021.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Deputy City Attorney Ashley Zambranu is going to be giving you a PowerPoint presentation today. And while she's doing that, I'm going to be circulating for you Resolution Number 206-2021, which she will explain for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. I am presenting to you a council policy for conducting city council meetings. And... Thanks. Oh, did that do it? Okay. Not a problem. Specifically, this presentation is in response to a referral by Councilmember Arias for the city attorney's office to bring forward an item that would explore options for members of the public to speak after staff's presentation for the following agenda items: reports, deferred business, and new business. Just a quick reminder about the Brown Act. The Brown Act does require that the council take public comment on any item on the agenda prior to the council taking action. That means that the public needs to be given an opportunity to speak either prior to an item being called or during the council's consideration of that item. That means that if you were to, for example, revise the policy for when you take public comment, the most important thing is just to remember that prior to the council taking any action, and that does include deliberating or providing staff direction, that you take an opportunity to call for public comment prior to taking that action. The council meeting procedures are currently set forth in Resolution Number 206-2021. There are copies of that that have just been provided to you for reference. That was just updated by the city council in November of 2021. So many of you may recall that we used to have all of the council policies and procedures, including the way that public comment was handled in the municipal code, specifically Chapter 2.04. Following a review and desire to update those policies and procedures, much of that chapter was actually repealed, and it was inserted instead into a council policy that was adopted by resolution. So if there is a desire to amend those policies, the form that that would take is an amended resolution that we would bring back to the city council. Currently within that policy is where we talk about how public statements are handled. And as you know, we currently limit public statements to two minutes per person, 20 minutes total per agenda item. As you know, consent constitutes one item, and 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. Visually, this is what our current agenda outline looks like. So again, as you well know, item number five is where we currently take public statements. That's at the beginning of the meeting, and we segment it into agenda and non-agenda item public statements. The focus of today's referral, or Councilmember Arias's referral, is really items 10, 11, and 12 that I have highlighted for you there. So that's where reports, deferred business, and new business is currently taken on the agenda. To provide a little context for what public comments really look like, I actually worked with the city clerk, thank you, to put together some data for you so you can really get a sense of how many people come to our city council meetings and which items they really come to speak on. So for calendar years 2022 and 2023, we put together this bar chart for you. So the black bar, we'll start with year 2022, is the total number of people who came in person to a city council meeting to provide comment. So of course, it does not include people who submitted written comments. But those are people who came in person to provide public comment. Of those 158 people throughout the year that came for public comment, 97 of those spoke on non-agenda items. So the majority of people who come to speak at city council meetings actually appear to come to speak just on general topics of interest to them that they want to alert the city council to. It's a smaller subset. In 2022, the white bar, 61 people who came to speak specifically on items that were listed on the agenda. Now, one thing I would like to remind you is that that includes public hearings. So the vast majority of people, when we really looked at the particular topics that people speak on, they come because there's an item on public hearing. It's a smaller subset of that, which I have marked within the white box. So 29 people in year 2022 who came to speak specifically on items 10, 11, and 12. So those are the reports, new business, deferred business that we're really focused on. We put together the same numbers for 2023 last year. You can see that more people, for example, came in person to give public comment. Similarly, the majority of them, the red bar graph, 131, I believe that says, came to speak on non-agenda items. So it was a smaller subset, 77, that came to speak on agenda items, but the vast majority were for public hearings. It's actually only four people. I was a little surprised by this, but only four people all year who actually came to speak on reports, new business, or deferred business last year. So that's really the subset that we're looking at for right now, just to kind of give that picture. Now, before we go on to the next slide, just another thing to kind of, that I thought was interesting that I wanted to share. The city clerk does a great job of tracking all public comments, including the particular topics that people come. And what you can really see, if you look at these numbers, is there seem to just be particular hot topic things that garner a lot of public interest, and they're really responsible for generating the majority of people who come to speak. So, for example, last year, park rangers was a big topic, and a lot of people came to speak on that topic and account for some of those numbers. Other big topics, when we've looked at the last couple of years, include, for example, redistricting, or sometimes the budget. You know, oftentimes, the budget comes forward as a report item in addition to a public hearing item. And sometimes, there's particular items on the budget that just garner a lot of public interest, and people come to speak on that. Next slide. So I put together actually four different options for the council to consider with this referral. And option number one is no change. And the reason that I put that on here and included it as the first option was actually in light of what I just shared. Sometimes, there tends to just be one topic that garners a lot of public interest. And so I wanted to remind the city council that under your current policies and procedures, that the mayor already currently retains authority and discretion to defer public statements until the end of staff presentation on an item. So if there's ever a time that the council wanted to do that, you do have that built into your policy to do. Likewise, you can extend the time for public comment if you'd like, reorder items, or otherwise direct the proceedings any way that you deem appropriate. So, sorry, next slide. So again, that would just leave our current agenda outline here. I think at the committee level, that often happens a little bit more frequently. The chair of a committee may choose, when there's a lot of people who show up, to defer public comment until after staff provides that presentation. So I just wanted to let you know that that does remain an option for the city council as well. Next slide. Option number two, I'm referring to as the add time and opportunity option. So what I mean by that is leaving item number five, public statements, as is. We still take public comment at the beginning of the meeting. We segment it into agenda item and non-agenda item public statements. But when we get to items 10, 11, and 12, which is reports, deferred business, and new business, we would add additional opportunity for members of the public to speak following staff presentation. Some considerations with this option. Of course, it does raise the potential for people of speaking twice or wanting to save part of their remaining time for later. That could mean that it's more difficult to track, keep track of both individual speaker time limits as well as topic time limits, because you may be receiving public comment on the same item but at different times in the meeting. This is what that revised agenda outline could look like. So again, we would leave number five, which is in red, the same. But when you get to 10, 11, and 12, you would be adding additional time or opportunity for people to come speak following the staff presentation. Option number three, I'm referring to as the add time but change the rules. So what I mean by that is you could allow the public statements portion, item five, to still read the same, but the mayor would provide alternative direction to the public that when agenda item public statements were called, it was really only to statements on appointments and consent, which is items six and seven, that all people who wish to speak on items 10, 11, and 12, they have to wait until that item is called. The reason that I'm saying that that's different rules is that it would basically mean that depending on which item you wanted to speak on, there was a different rule about when you came forward to speak. So some considerations with this is, obviously, there's some potential for confusion, people speaking twice or at the incorrect time, because when agenda item public statements were taken at the beginning of the meeting, that was really only for items six and seven, then public hearing items would happen, items eight and nine, and after staff recommendation for 10, 11, and 12. I do think that this is perhaps the most complex to try to implement. I did include it as an option, though, because I think the face value of the referral was not necessarily to add additional time to public comment, but just to reserve when public comment was taken on those later items. So again, this is kind of what that would look like. You would still have those public statements taken at the beginning of the meeting, but they would really only be for agenda items six and seven. Everyone else would wait until after staff presentation, when their item was called. Option number four, I'm referring to as just revise completely. And what I mean by that is you would take all non-agenda item public statements, either at the beginning of the meeting, the way we currently do, or you could actually bump them to the end of the meeting if you chose to. And all agenda item public statements would be taken at the time the item was called. That way, there would be one rule consistent for all agenda items. Some considerations with this. Of course, people must then wait through the meeting to speak until their item is called. It does also require additional time, just sort of procedurally, administratively, to call for public comment each time an item is called. Now, likely, that's minimal extra time. You don't often have someone who comes to speak for every single item on the agenda. But as a reminder, under the Brown Act, if you were to revise the policy to operate this way, even if no one came forward to speak on an item, you would need to take the time to provide the opportunity to make sure that you formally called for public comment for each item on the agenda before you take action. So this is sort of what that would look like. You would take non-agenda item public statements at number five at the beginning of the meeting if you chose. Alternatively, you could bump it to the end of the meeting, which is why I have it as number 15. And then for every other item, appointments, consent, reports, deferred business, new business, you would separately call for public statements after staff presentation. So that's a lot of information, four different options. This is my last slide. But a recap, kind of summary of those options. So option one, again, if you recall, was just to leave it as is, with the understanding that if there was a particular topic you wanted to defer public comment on, the mayor does have discretion to do so. Option two would be adding that additional time and opportunity specifically for items 10, 11, and 12. Option three would be, you know, different rules depending on which item you were wanting to come forward and speak on. And option four would be, let's just revise the policy completely to really achieve whatever your objective is. And that's it. I'm available for questions or discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zambranu. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Attorney Jenny Gennaro, for bringing this back. I think this gets at the heart of, you know, what Michael Turnipseed said at the very beginning of this meeting. We know that it takes time to put together presentations of all sorts, and it's very difficult to get those in on time. And so I think that the least that we can do is set ourselves up to make sure that the public has an opportunity to read those reports, to get those reports from staff, and make educated comments. I believe everyone on this council has seen situations where folks in the audience make public comment, thinking that a particular item is set up a particular way, when in fact, after the presentation, they realize that, you know, we are already addressing their concern in some way, shape, or form. So I think that this is pretty simple. It maintains most of what we implemented back in 2021. It'll maintain the public statements limit to two minutes, maintain the 20-minute total per agenda item. And we already do this for public hearings. So it's a simple addition of deferred business, new business, and reports to that bucket. And I appreciate Ashley mentioning that, you know, although the number is small, these are critical moments during our calendar year. You know, with items like the park ranger issue, every year, we have reports on the budget, which oftentimes do not get an opportunity for a public presentation after that report is made. So with that, I want to make a motion on item, option number three. In the spirit of transparency, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. On the one hand, I don't really have a problem with option three. Except what I have observed in seven years, and with the numerous people I've asked to come down and speak on a subject that they're interested in, or I'd like their opinion, every single one of them says, do I have to wait through the whole meeting? They want to come at five, and I mean, this is serious, and get out of here. Or they won't, they will not come and wait through the meeting and say, well, okay, come at about eight, or, and guess. And this is a real problem. I, the, the theory, I think, is, is, is good and fine. But I think it's a little theoretical, because I have, I know I will get fewer people willing to come and speak, which was the objective. If I say, well, you know, your agenda, I have, take a look at the agenda, or I'll send you one, it probably comes up in about two hours into the meeting or an hour. Maybe you better, you better come at the beginning so you don't get missed. I think it adds, from, from their standpoint, some uncertainty and some inconvenience. So that's my only hesitation here, is this I know is a reality. And I really want people to come on subjects and speak, and I'm just afraid they won't come if I say, well, you're going to have to wait through the meeting, you're probably... We used to do this with public hearings on projects, you know, real estate projects. I wanted people to come and speak. Oh, well, that one will probably be about two hours in, and I couldn't tell them when, so you better come for the whole meeting. And it really became difficult to get them to devote more than, you know, half an hour. They didn't, they want to get home and have dinner. They didn't want to come and sit around for two hours. So I'm kind of cogitating on this a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Ashley. That was an excellent presentation, by the way. I appreciate what you're wanting to do, Eric, to give people more opportunity to speak. But I truly do agree with Bruce, because these meetings are at 5:15, where people can get off, leave work, zip down to city council, give their opinion, and then be able to get home with their families. And I think we're going to, it's going to be an imposition. I feel like what we're already doing is working well, option one, but it gives me even greater sense of being able to support option one, knowing, which I didn't know until you brought it to our attention tonight, that we do have the discretion, mayor has the discretion to move things around if needed, which if we have a hot topic come, you know, we know before the meeting, we could, we could lobby her and say, hey, do you think we can change this around tonight so that we can take care of this business? So we have the option to already do that without making all these changes in, in the system. So I think I'll have to support option one, knowing that we can't, we do have flexibility, if we need the flexibility. And I think we need to not have people sitting through some of these meetings two and three hours before they can, before they can speak. So that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, she was going through it. I just, I, I thought option three made the most sense, and I wasn't sure which way Eric was going to go. So I'm glad when he finally said that option three was what he wanted, which specifically addresses what Mr. Turnipseed mentioned, is that now they're making comments without knowing what the real staff report is. And so it just makes sense to hear the staff report and then make comments. It doesn't help, the other point that he made is that, you know, the, the slide or the staff report should be online prior to, so that he could look at it and then make comments. But if that's not possible, and that, that would be the priority, you know, what you would want is for this presentation to be online before, before the meeting, then at least you would be able to hear it and see it before you made your comments. And option two, I understand what Councilmember Freeman is saying, is, you know, people don't want to stay. But to me, it gets, you get public statements at the beginning, and then, like you say, you discuss two hours worth of other stuff, and then you come up to this item, and those comments get kind of lost. So I, I think option three makes the most sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. In order to add the presentations online, do you need a motion for that? Is that something separate that you'd need from us?
Mayor, Councilmember Cor, there is no regulation that the presentation be online per the Brown Act. I've heard that, I've heard that statement made, and it's downright false. As a city attorney, I will not be providing my presentations ahead of time, simply because I may change my mind. I don't, I don't know exactly the exact detail or the exact order of the PowerPoints, et cetera. So I think, what I will tell you is that I think when staff has the presentation and they, they are comfortable putting it online because they've done enough advanced research and they have the time to do it, it's done. But 99 times out of 100, it's, that's really not, that's really not possible. And there's no legal requirement that be done. The legal requirement requires that you take public comment before you deliberate.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. I agree. I think option three then alleviates that stress that maybe constituents or the residents might feel in feeling as though they don't have all of the material prepared to make a public comment. And I think, you know, in the spirit of transparency, there are some city council meetings where there are a number of items and public comments. Like, we want to prevent public comments being lost in between non-agenda and agenda items, and I think it would really help to have folks comment. And if it's, you know, important enough, and we hope and can encourage folks to stick around, excuse me, until the agenda item, in order to make those comments, I think it just adds to the relevancy of the conversation, and it allows for a much more richer conversation around, around the different agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, thank you, because I, glad we discussed this. I learned something as we had this discussion. And I guess what, what I've sort of learned is it isn't practical that we're going to be able to get the staff reports online, so that people could review them and therefore make comments at the beginning of the meeting. And given that, I agree with Mr. Turnipseed. You know, it's pretty hard to make a comment on something you haven't read or don't know about. So although I do think fewer people will wait through it, maybe the people who really care will wait and are really interested. So I think I'm, I'm, given that new information, I'm, I think I'm supportive of option three.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Mayor, if I could just clarify.
Sure.
The staff reports are online. It's the PowerPoints that are not being included, so that Councilmember Freeman understands that.
Okay. But sometimes the PowerPoints are quite informative and...
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important for us to encourage public input and engagement in lots of different ways. Councilmember Freeman brings up a good example of, you know, when we are encouraging folks to participate in an agenda item, sometimes it is discouraging to have to wait. So that would go against the grain of our hope, I think, our collective hope, to engage the community, encourage engagement as best we can. There are examples, though, already, where community members have to wait. There are public hearings where we do not move up the agenda. Those who want to participate in a public hearing item have to wait for the public hearing, which is at the end of the meeting, or near the end of the meeting. We want engagement from our community that is informed as best as we can help provide information. I think we ought to work towards that goal. And so I am in agreement with Mr. Turnipseed's request and Councilmember Arias's recommendation. I'll support option three.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to comment? Seeing none, you have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir and Gray voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 3B, Charter Review Update.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This update is also a request of council to provide sort of an update and status and a reminder of charter review considerations. And so I'll walk through just a quick recap of some of the scope and, and key considerations, and then some reminders of what was given to the council through the independent review of the charter by Moss Adams, and then finalize with some staff recommendations. So just, we'll cover, again, objectives, approach, scope, timing, costs, and the framework. As a reminder of why to even look at charter review is that we wanted to ensure that if there were any specific or mandated changes that may be required, there, at the time, this is actually going all the way back to the beginning of '22, when there was a specific reason to look at police. We also wanted to, you know, ensure if there was any areas of opportunity or concern, look for best practices, and probably most important to me is, are there any efficiencies or clarifications that would make city business more, you know, effective and timely? So we, in that approach, we had pointed out to council there were various ways to go about this, whether that was through commissions, committees, or outside review. And ultimately, council chose outside review. The scope of that review was fairly targeted, ultimately. We didn't look at everything in the charter. We looked specifically at these five sections around civil service, the legislative department, which is mayor and council, and then some of our procurement policies. For the timeline, again, we had actually very early conversations in '22, but then council gave direction to staff in early '23 to pursue an independent review that was presented to council and... presented to council in June of '23. And we had actually communicated at the time that early '24 would be an important time to make some decisions and direction, because the charter amendments to have to appear on general election ballots, we have to be done with any deliberations and hearings by June and take action so that the county can put it on the ballot in August. And also, just a reminder again, that topics, because of general election, could be considered in 2024, but also could be addressed later in 2026. Just as a reminder, election costs have seen some increases due to some state mandates in how the information is sent out. We typically will spend anywhere from $600,000 to $700,000 on a total election. Adding a ballot item to a general election would probably, per ballot measure, would probably be an additional $100,000 to that. So here's a reminder for the independent review. Moss Adams did a complete overview scan of the city charter, but they really, again, honed in on those key sections, developed some prioritized lists for the evaluation from those key sections, looked at peer cities and did some peer analysis, and also just provided some feedback on best practice research related to charters in general. So I'm gonna give a reminder to council of, there were two tiers that Moss Adams had presented as higher priority charter considerations. That was based both on their own best practice research, as well as feedback from the city council and interviews. And those included salaries for city council members and mayor, the maintenance of our civil service boards, the personnel provisions that are fairly detailed in the charter. That's not typical to be that detailed. It's often in municipal code or policy, but not necessarily in charter. And then some of the contracting processes being fairly prescriptive, again, in the charter, that might be better in city policy. And then there was just some unique language about franchises there that maybe is a little bit outdated, but I'll come back to that one in a moment. It's not problematic for us. It hasn't caused us any problems. Just in their best practice review noted that it's atypical to have specific penalties listed within the charter itself. Medium considerations were ones that, again, probably would not create a major new value, and so were a lower priority. Just a note that some cities choose to provide a very detailed process for the election of vacant council positions. Our charter has some language that reflects that, but also kind of leaves it open to council consideration. However, that is appropriate for council to say, we'll decide how to carry out that process, and when the time comes, that's okay. But some charters have it specified. The other is that, you know, some of the job descriptions for executives within the city are very detailed and lengthy in the charter. It's atypical, probably not necessary. But again, is that worth putting it on a ballot, paying those costs? It's not causing us any problems. That's why it was not a high priority. The next one, the specifics, oh, if you could go back one side, thank you. The specifics of the personnel system and civil service board duties, again, outdated a bit, but would also reflect that we've been able to continue to carry out those duties and functions without major issues. And lastly, our charter does not have a conflict of interest code, which is fairly typical in most charters. I would note, we are governed by the California FPPC, which addresses that. But in its absence, or if the city wanted to make a proactive statement to that effect, it could add some value to the charter. However, again, it's not causing any notable problems for us today. We're covered by FPPC, so a lower priority. Then if we could go to the next slide. So my recommendation to councils is that the medium priority items don't provide significant benefits and efficiencies and improvements, and would only consider pursuing, you know, some of those as lesser substantive, you know, reviews if there were other high priority items that we're trying to pursue. But I'll also note that, again, the return on value on those is a bit lower. For some of the high priority items, I do believe that it could create efficiencies around personnel and civil service. However, those are very complicated items that I would suggest we need more time to address and would be hard-pressed to address in the current election cycle. Lastly, again, the procurement and the franchise items are a bit outdated, but they're not causing us problems today, and doesn't feel to me worth that effort and return investment in the current election cycle. Beyond those items, if there are other items that the council feels are high priority items, we would take staff direction on further pursuing those high priority items. Just note, we have between now and June to, you know, complete any deliberations and come back to the council. There's additional slides in your packet that provide more details on each one of those high priority items. It was not my intent to walk through each of those again. Those were the slides that Moss Adams provided to you. If there's discussion on any one of those high priority items, we can go to that slide to help facilitate the discussion, but it wasn't my intent to go back and go through each of those slides again. And so with that recommendation about just, again, some of our timing realities and what the value comes out of those items, I think we would take, you know, staff questions, discussion, and direction on whether we continue to pursue any of those items over the next four to five months.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. I don't see any requests to speak. Anybody having trouble with? Councilmember Arias, are you trying to press the button? I don't see anything. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the real item of interest is around, surrounding council pay. I think, you know, there are many circles that we go into, find ourselves in throughout the community, and they're shocked to find out how little that we are paid as a council, as the ninth largest city. And I think that, you know, oftentimes in conversation with them and educating them, they are in agreement that there should be some change. Now, there is hardly ever agreement on how much we should be making. But I think the simple answer is that it should be more than what it currently is. I'm curious to know what the rest of this council thinks on that item. I think that is, in terms of making sure that, you know, everybody, not just folks like me who are single and don't have kids, but, you know, our family members, you know, our parents, have an opportunity to be able to cover basic costs like healthcare, cover costs like childcare, and actually attend these meetings and take time out of work to be able to come and do that. I think that's critical. So I'm not suggesting any answers tonight for how much we should be increasing it, or taking it to the voters, rather. But I think that that should be a topic for discussion. The second piece to this, I think that is critical, is that I would like to see us ensure that no member of this council actually benefits immediately from this measure if passed. I think if I were to support, you know, some sort of ballot measure that would increase council pay, that I would ask that we at least wait until the next election cycle to see who the voters want in those particular seats to actually start benefiting from that proposal if passed. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Thanks, Mayor. I honestly don't see things that way. I've been here for almost 18 years. I knew what the pay was coming in. We knew what all the requirements were when we were coming in, and it's worked very well. So just to up the ante for council members, I don't think is a good sign to the public. I think there's a lot of public right now that are worrying about just putting food on the table, being able to pay their bills, and I don't think it sets well if we give ourselves a raise and we don't really have a way to subsidize what's going on in our committee, community. So I'm totally against increased pay. I will never vote for it, and I think that if council members think through this, I think they would agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was asked to run for city council, I had no idea what the compensation was. In fact, I didn't know what the compensation was until after I was elected, and it ended up in my bank account. I did know that insurance would be provided, and you had mentioned that, Councilmember Arias, that insurance would be provided. And being that I was paying for my own insurance through our business, I knew what that value was. And for me, again, I didn't run because of this benefit. I found out after I was elected that insurance was provided, and for me, that was a $12,000 a year value. So I feel that the city council should be, it's local government, should be a place where people are willing to serve and to, because they love their community. I would hate to see salaries start coming into play, because I believe that it only creates in a springboard for politicians instead of locals wanting to serve their city. I know it's difficult sometimes to make, you know, all the meetings, but I think it's, again, it's a point of service. And when I talk to constituents, in fact, I don't bring this subject up ever, but I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and said, "Councilmember Gray, I really appreciate what you do for the city, because I know you're not getting paid much to do it." And I just got an email this week that she started her email out with that very sentiment, a woman I've never met. So it's important, I think, that we maintain the integrity of the council and that we're all here for the right purpose. I know that those that are on this dais today are here for the right purpose. I think it's what could be coming in the future that we need to ward against. So anyway, I would not be able to support salary increases.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I agree. I think this is a public service job, and no one should expect to be paid much. I don't know if it should be 100 or 300 or 500, but it should, I think, this should not evolve into a full-time job. However, it would, before this, whatever number was ever put on a ballot after more discussion, if anyone has an idea of how any sort of even informal surveys of the public on this subject could garner their opinions, I mean, it may not be a perfect sample, but I would be interested to see what the public thinks the city council people should earn in Bakersfield. So city manager, if there's some way that you can do some surveys, you know, should they be paid, you know, zero, be paid 100, 500,000, just something that, it'd be interesting to get some feedback from the public before it ever went on a ballot. It might encourage you or discourage you from ever putting it on a ballot. Kern County is a pretty conservative place, and I think, sometimes people are surprised when I say, oh, it's 100 bucks a month. They think, well, that's kind of low. On the other hand, people say, well, I, you know, I don't want people, I don't want to go like these other cities where it's a full-time job, where you try to figure out new projects all the time and way to spend new money and expand government. So it'd be interesting to know what our public thinks.
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman, I appreciate the suggestion and the question. I think as a general practice, surveying and getting feedback is a good practice. I think, given the time crunch that we have to be able to, you know, land on specific recommendations and language and get that back for council consideration and vote, to do a statistically valid, you know, pay for a survey, I don't think we have the time for that. If it's as simple as having a Survey Monkey, you know, on social media, that's probably the extent of what we could do with the time that's in front of us. I would also just, again, remind council, you know, in order to meet a June timeline, I assume there's going to be several conversations about this at the dais. We have a very limited timeframe and would, you know, need specific direction from council to set an amount to then, you know, be able to bring back for deliberation and consideration. So we do have a tight time consideration.
By the way, if you were trying to make the next ballot, and you were gonna put charter changes on it, amendments, would they be, would they be voted on individually, so it wouldn't be a package deal that, you know, they'd all go down if one went down?
That's at the discretion of council. You can package them together, or you can keep them separate. Those are council decisions that would have to be made.
Okay, but they could be separate so that we, you know, if one isn't popular, the other two might be. I wouldn't want to package them.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, you, I don't know if all of you remember, but a couple of months ago, I did a presentation on specifically the charter, the potential charter revision for pay, and we talked about whether you could package it and the strategy in that. And my recollection is, is that we talked about the timeline, and I said, and I think the council had directed me, had charged me with specifically that charter, that potential charter revision for the salaries. And I have at least some recollection that my suggestion to all of you was, if I didn't hear anything from you, it was over. It was a non-issue. And I have not heard anything from any of you that you wanted to move forward with this, because really where we are is you need to decide what that dollar amount is. And then we have to craft the language. And you may remember when we've done other charter revisions, that's a long, tedious process, because every word comes into play. So I'm surprised to hear this, actually, right now from the city manager, but if that's really where you want to go tonight, I need direction tonight from one of you, and I need a motion that that's really what you want to charge my office with doing, because we are running out of time, and I need a dollar amount that you would like me to insert.
I do remember you gave us the history of each time we have voted on salary increases, and they've been overwhelmingly rejected, which was why I kind of thought the issue was dead to just from the history was so bad, which is why if this council decided to put something on the agenda, I would hope that they, we would not package it with others so that we didn't, everything didn't go down in flames if this one was defeated again.
Councilmember Freeman, you have my word that my office has not done any work on any charter amendment since I gave that presentation. And again, I would tell you that I've been involved in many charter amendments, and they are delicate items that each word has to be looked at. So I don't even, I don't even know what other, what other possible amendments, even on a medium priority. I don't even know what verbiage either Moss Adams is considering or anyone else is considering, because they have not been run through the city attorney's office.
I hear you. It is a little late to bring something this sensitive up.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I don't see any other requests to speak. Vice Mayor.
Just want to clarify a point. So the last time we spoke about this, I believe that we were talking about it in the context of the primary, the presidential primary in March. And my direction was that it was too short of a timeline and that we ought to aim for the November general election.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you are correct. I absolutely distinctly remember that. I gave the council an option that you could actually go in March with the charter amendment for the salaries, and the council, my recollection is unanimously said, no, we're not interested in doing that. But again, my recollection is, I said, hey, if you don't want to do that, then we need to get moving, right? Because we have to put this on the November election, and that means we, I need some, I need some direction from four of you. What number do you want? How do you, how do you want to phrase it? Remember, we talked about a whole, we talked about a variety of options.
Right. Can you walk me through one more time the actual timeline for November? And I apologize, I've been up since four with the point of time count, so.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I've been up since 4:00 with the point of time count, so I'm a little rusty right now.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm going to lean a little bit on the city clerk for this, but my, if, and Deputy City Attorney Zambrano, do you remember, I believe that we need to get, we have to call for the election and get everything with all of the language in June by this year over to the county clerk. Am I about right? Yeah.
Okay, so we have to, as your office
Yes, sir.
--ask to submit to the county clerk in June, the ballot language.
We, the council has to consolidate the election, the council has to approve the language, and doing so, yes, that language would have to be fully, fully developed, correct.
Okay, it's January 24th. We're talking, what, five months away?
Correct.
Internally, what is your timeline? How long will it take for your staff? I'm just trying to get a sense of how much time we really do have.
Well, again, based upon my previous meeting with the council, I felt that there was not, there was not a majority of you that really, A, wanted, had a specific number in mind. So, one, we need the amount that you would like, that you think that your salary should be. Once you determine what that amount is, I can certainly give some language for the council to consider on how it should be, how it should be formatted. Remember, we talked about whether or not you wanted full-time in there, or you, and we talked about the pros and cons with that. And there were different sections, as I recall, in the charter that had to be repealed and other sections had to be added, only on the pay issue. So I can very easily come back to the council on February the 14th, and I can, I can duplicate that PowerPoint presentation for the council, and if then there's direction, we can, we can certainly go from there.
I appreciate it. I'm going to make a couple of general comments, and then I'm going to get into some specific ideas of how we can proceed forward. Just so I can state to the public and to my colleagues where I stand, I agree, this is a public service job. I do not believe that we should move towards a full-time city council. I don't think that is appropriate for this time or what our city really does require. I do want to point out, though, a comment that Councilmember Weir made just a moment ago, because I think it was a really important point that should really sort of help us frame this whole conversation. He stated that people in our community really are worried about paying bills and about putting food on their table, and that is their number one priority. And I absolutely agree. Many of my colleague, my constituents and lots of my family members, frankly, are very worried about their local, their very specific household economy, and what the future might hold for them. If we think about that for a minute, what does that mean for the potential pool of folks who are willing to actually run for this office in the future? If so many people are financially burdened and worried about their own economic state, how on earth are we able to attract talented, qualified, caring people when the only compensation is $100 a month? When we have individuals who are smart and talented, who care about this city, who have family members, who have, who have children and dependents and real responsibilities trying to put food on the table? And to be able to do this job, and for me, has become practically a full-time job, to respond to the needs of War II, literally working seven days a week, every night, every weekend, eight hours a day, how on earth do we expect new folks to be able to do that, A? And B, how do we expect them to want to do that? This is not about council pay for this council, it's for council pay for future city council members, and it's not some sort of fringe benefit. It's so that they can meet, practically speaking, they can meet the needs of their families in order to do this job effectively. And honestly, $100 a month, I just don't think meets, meets that criteria. And I'm not doing this for myself. I will reject any sort of salary increase, and I'll take the oath right now that this will not benefit me in the future if, if our constituents decide and the citizens decide to move this forward. I'm, this is not a personal interest of mine at all. It is about the future of our city council and the future leadership and the quality of the leadership. So I don't have a number right now. I don't, I don't know what appropriate amount. We have a lot of comparisons. I would like to hear from some of our key community leaders and organizations in the community. Mr. Turnipseed's here tonight. Kern Tax Payers Association is one, the Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce. You know, there's several other groups that I, I think we ought to survey to hear their input, but I don't, I don't quite have that number myself. So yes, I would like, Mr. Nowaf, you can bring this back at the February 14th council meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Cor. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to clarify first, what I think I'm hearing from the city manager is no changes? It seems like we talked about there was some quote-unquote cleanup or some, some changes we thought we should do, and now I think I'm hearing that there are none.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith, Mayor and council. I think that's an accurate summarization, and let me, but let me just add a little more flavor to it. We acknowledged that, you know, the franchise, you know, tax language would be, in a perfect world, that language, you know, should be updated, but it's not creating conflict for us. We don't really use that section, and to put that on a ballot at $200,000 and, you know, spend the time, you know, vetting through that one with the other priorities that are in front of us, just don't recommend that. That's a high-value change right now. I think some of the challenges with our charter and its age, some of these sections, again, like the franchise and the city officer descriptions, again, if you're going to do a broad charter revamp, those would be good cleanup items, but as standalone ballot measures, there's not a big return on investment for those, and so that's why I've, you know, made that recommendation that I don't think we're going to get a lot of value for the effort and cost at this point.
Okay. I guess I would just reinforce what Councilmember Arias said. I've been on the council, going on 12 years now, and always people say, "I can't believe you guys don't get paid." And I would also agree with Councilmember Gray. We do get paid, we do get the health insurance, and we get, you know, car allowance, and so it seems like we're somewhere in between, but I don't have a number either. It looks like some of these comparable cities, you know, $20,000 plus or minus seems to be a number in there, so I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I went a little far. So it's clear that our charter needs reviewing, even in departments where you have such a challenge recruiting, like our fire department has expressed many times, that some of the restrictions, our charter has us adhere to, results in the, just the disparity in having enough folks in our fire department, but the, kind of the matter at hand is council pay. And what I would say is, one, I appreciate Councilmember Arias saying this would be for future council, the future city council, not us. And as other cities have also adopted, it has not applied to the city council who adopts it, but rather those who follow, and I appreciate you starting with that. And it truly, as we're thinking about the future here, our constituents and our residents do deserve full-time attention, and as Councilmember Gonzalez has shared, Vice Mayor Gonzalez has shared, other council folks on the dais who do spend, you know, if you were to log your hours, you probably come close to 40 hours a week that you're spending in constituent services. And besides pay, I think what, when we compare to cities that are sizable and as a, as a growing city within the state of California, and when we compare to sister cities of our size and our demographics, it's also the absence of not having an office of staff members who are able to aid in the constituent services. Our city manager staff does a great job, but they also have many other responsibilities. And if there were folks within the city council staff that are able to address constituent services and do legislative and policy research, I think that adds a dimension beyond even just the salary number attached. Because those same folks that learn about city governance within a city council member's office are then able to grow and see themselves in those same city council chairs, and that's happened in other cities, where folks who have worked in a city council member's office then ran for that office later in life because they had such an immediate connection and engagement with constituents, with policymaking and research. And what we do is, we actually are, we're, we're kind of creating those future leaders from, from within our city council, and I think that's very important. What else we see in nearby cities within the Central Valley is young leaders emerge, single parents are able to serve, and I think what we're saying when we, yes, it's somewhere in between, we do get health insurance, but where, how far does that $100 a month really go? But what we're saying is, who is not allowed to run for the council when we don't institute a livable wage or compensation that, that gives folks the opportunity to transition between different careers? Some of our servicemen are basically police officers that are standing in this city council chamber today. Are we saying that, you know, they won't have the opportunity, they're not capable of making policy decisions and, and able to serve on a council and shouldn't be able to still provide for their families by having a livable wage when they serve on the council? Local teachers, fire departments. What we're saying is, when, when there isn't a livable salary attached, is who can't serve on the city council? I think that's what, not having a dollar amount attached, that's what it really says. So those are my initial thoughts, and I look forward to more conversation around this as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. In alignment with the Vice Mayor's request for an additional update on how we can move forward in the future, I would just ask that for the salary comparisons, we really distinguish for these like cities exactly where those numbers are coming from. So for Anaheim, it's $18,000. Where does the rationale come from, $18,000? I know that there are certain cities that peg it to particular salaries of other community leaders throughout their various communities, and I think that would at least help us try to understand, you know, what, what we could potentially tie it to here locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. Anything further? Councilmember Cor.
Councilmember Arias's comments inspired me to add, I think, a point of research also is that our county board of supervisors, a lot of their districts have the same amount of district, constituents within their districts as city council districts as well, and I think comparing to our counterparts on the county board of supervisors would also help give the residents of our city kind of an idea of how, of what the expectation really is and comparable salary amounts, if that's something that we can add.
Okay. I don't see anything further. Just receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
If you have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you. And that concludes our agenda. We are adjourned at 4:37.